Okay, it's seven o'clock. Let's call the June 7th Regular Zoning Commission Meeting to order. We have a full set of commissioners, and so we don't need any alternates tonight. First order of business is the approval of the minutes of May 17. We edited them this morning and put a new copy up, I think around noon. No, earlier than that, they might. Anyway, anybody have any comments or corrections to the minutes?
I have four minor things.
Okay.
Actually, did we figure out how Diane spells her name? Is she one N or two?
Diane is, I think she said one N.
Okay, well then, as an alternate on line 10, she should have one N. There should be a four added. Listen Osborne, thank the applicant for improving screening with the four. Improving screening.
Right.
Okay, 85, line 85, the last word in that sentence, that N should be is. A self-service bay that is within the building, instead of.
Good eye, Kevin.
And then 131 versus should be an U versus an E.
Yes, S U S. Okay, any others?
Couple lines down, 134.
Yep.
The word permit, it should just be permit.
Okay, any other, any other catches? Can we have motion to approve the minutes as corrected?
Don't move.
Mike Doyle move to second it?
Now second, oh, who's seconded?
Kevin Gray seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining?
I'll abstain, I wasn't here.
Who?
Donna wasn't there, so I'll abstain.
Okay, so it's five, five nothing. Okay, next order of business is the continuation of the public hearing on application 21-10 of Valley Recreation LLC for the development of a, of a, what do we got?
Should we please?
Yeah, mumble, mumble, go ahead. Anybody have any comments? Do we have, do we have any outside comments, Mike? Any email comments or anything?
No, I don't have any written comments, but I think you have maybe one or two members of the public that signed on that may want to speak.
Okay, well first commissioners, do you have any other comments to make at this point?
I think we had all the outstanding questions we had from the town engineer answered and then confirmed by the town engineer. So I think we're in okay shape there. He just had a suggested additions to the motion. But I think we're okay as far as engineering is concerned.
Good. Public, you see some people that are logged on that, yes ma'am, can you give your name and address?
Sorry, my name is Carol Rosenback at 22 Brenton Wood Drive, and I'm in the Summer Shield condominiums that border the Tractor Supply property.
Right.
And the question I had was in regards to the stockade fence that they said they wouldn't be taking down. Well, the fence itself is falling down. And I was wondering if that could be addressed at all with them? And on our side it's six feet, and I noticed on the maps that on the other side it's like eight feet. But the, the, the stockade fence has been up a very long time. I've been here like 23 years and it's been up since then. So just a thought that maybe they would be a good neighbor and maybe redo that for us.
Okay.
And, and the second question I had was in regards to when they do deliveries, when they back the truck, they have to back the truck up alongside the building because they can't turn around or they can't go around the building. So when they back that truck up, I don't know how many times a week or, you know, how much time they, they would do deliveries. But I'm thinking that just the idea of the, the truck backing up and the noise they have to make with that beeping to back up, and then they usually leave the truck running there. I was thinking maybe the, the stockade fence would help that out too, I don't know, but that was my second suggestion.
Okay, any other comments from the public? Mike, did you say there's another person that's on? Matt, are you part of the?
Yeah, I thought I saw. That's part of the, the applicant.
Yeah, I'm the applicant.
The applicant. Okay, I don't see anyone else. Any other comments from anybody? Okay. Jim, do you have any comments on the stockade fence situation?
I'm gonna let Matt address that one.
Oh yeah, no, I was going to just, you know, thank Carol for her questions and, you know, of course, we're happy to be a good neighbor. We hope that everything that we do, you'll be satisfied with at a, at a, at a minimum. But yes, Jim can talk about the stockade fence a little bit. I do want to just address the backup of the trucks. The store will get one delivery truck per week. And it, you know, it'll have to maneuver along the front of the property between the building and Route 202 to, you know, position itself to back down the side. So I believe, you know, most of the noise that it makes should take place up in that area, pretty, pretty well away from the development. And then of course it'll, you know, due to safety, it'll make the backup alarm as it's backing into position. But that'll be a once per week situation, so you shouldn't, you won't have to deal with that certainly more than that. No, no we, we really want you to. And so, you know, as far as the stockade fence is concerned, Jim is integral with, you know, or he, he knows a lot about the existing condition of it, and, you know, we promise to keep it there. And, you know, I think that at a minimum, we should make sure that the, it's, it's, the integrity is kept and that it's, any panels that need to be replaced are replaced. And if the whole thing needs to get replaced, you know, we can look at that too. But, you know, Jim, how, what is the current status of that fence? So I haven't taken a good look at that fence along that side of the property.
Along the, I'll say the northern, in the, in the western property line, there is portions that are kind of keeled over. So there are definitely sections that need to be repaired or replaced. So as Matt had mentioned, you know, we can go in and take care of, at a minimum, those sections. Make sure it's, it's upright and new pieces are installed in its place. Matt also mentioned about the deliveries, I'll reiterate, we get one, basically one delivery a week. Correct me if I'm wrong, Matt, we can also request the time that it comes in to make sure it's when people are up and things are operational, you know, people are operating, it's time, the first thing in the morning, so it interrupts anybody. We can control that, that time. But for the fence, you know, we, we can go through it. And I know there was, especially along the Westley Prop line, there was a section that's kind of, you know, leaning over a bit. So we can fix or replace that section.
Yeah, yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna want to replace that. I mean, we want to do it for you, Carol, and for others. Although I think Carol may, oh, she's still there. You know, for you and other neighbors too, but also for ourselves. And we don't want an unsightly finished product. So I think that we'll have to analyze that and fencing that is certainly rotted and keeled over, fallen over. You know, we gotta replace those panels and, you know, if not, probably just go through the whole fence line and maybe just replace the whole thing. So I don't want brand new panels next to old panels, you know, but I think we're definitely gonna take a close look at that. And Jim, the fence is on our, our property, is that correct?
Yeah, it's on our property, it's right on the property line.
Okay.
Okay, any other comments from the commission? Close public hearing?
I move that we close the public hearing on application 2110.
I'll second that.
Second, all right, Bruce?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining? Okay, it's closed, six nothing. Okay, the next order of business is consideration of the application 2110 of Valley Recreation for special exceptions pursuant to outdoor storage. And a site plan as well, right? Mike?
I think we lost Mike.
We lost Mike. It's for outdoor, it's for outdoor storage and for reduction of the required parking spaces. Okay, any comments from any of the commissioners?
Yeah, the, well, my, yeah, the thing I would comment is that the, the draft motion we have does not, unless I'm missing it here, does not include the requirement recommended by the town engineer that if the applicant moves on, that the 55 spaces would be restored.
Well, I have a larger issue along the same lines, Kevin, that it's not clear to me which things in Jeff's concerns that are clearly stated. What is, which ones stop the, you know, what, I don't know, did they get a CO for use of the building? Because what I expect is that the things Jeff has identified need to be 100% addressed or they don't get to use the building. And so at some point, I mean, there's a community of interest here. They're not gonna stop at the last minute from the last thing, but it's too late, as I understand. I just want to hear Mike confirm it. It's too late if we vote that motion. And, you know, assuming the addition of the point you're making, that it's in Jeff's note, but it isn't in the motion. I just want to be clear that, again, we're, it's 100% compliance with Jeff's points. No arguing, no halfway, no nothing. But when we sign off, they're ready, willing, and able to comply with his, recommend, his findings and recommendations. I mean, the way this works is there is no, I mean, it's not a point of debate between us and the applicant at this point. It's up to us to make a decision. And I just want to be clear, I'm being redundant here, but I just want to be clear about the impact of Jeff's multiple issues.
So, I, I know the public hearing is closed, but we unfortunately don't have Mike on the line.
Well, he's, he's back.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I actually disagree with that because if, if Tractor Supply, if a new user comes in, they're gonna have to go through a compliance review with them, therefore they need to add, because, you know, using that area for storage, et cetera, additional parking. So I, I don't, I would not recommend conditioning that for the sole fact, like I said, we would deal with that when the new user comes before the commission, should they leave. Perfect world is that Tractor.
Okay, good, that answers that one. Can I answer the other two or, so think we're losing Mike?
We lose Mike again?
Yes.
Yeah. Again, Town Hall, Wi-Fi is really. So the last thing was the drainage concerns and comments about sewer connection, et cetera. You also have correspondence from WPCA that discusses, you know, some designs, the, the, the plan sheet details which need to be on the plans. That could be addressed through final plans. It's not something that should hold them up. The last is, I don't know if we, I'm sorry, but I missed part of Bruce's, your comments, you know, any?
Can I, can I paraphrase for Mike?
You think? You're trying to talk, Mike?
Yes, yes. I don't know what you heard at the, I'm so embarrassed, because I'm, I'm here in Town Hall right now. So the, the one maybe item that, that still is outstanding, but they, they didn't do infiltration test, the infiltration requirement from Jeff's comments.
I know what I'm talking about at the next Town Technology Task Force meeting.
So again, I know the public hearing is closed, but in an effort to help Mike, is it possible that I can answer through Mike?
Um, no, shut up.
We do have a, so the applicant submitted a rebuttal or reply to Jeff's comments, and then Jeff submitted a second letter where he basically said things were okay except for the infiltration test. And at the bottom, he did give a favorable recommendation, so I think we're okay.
Yeah, I think, I think we do have the CO as well. If they don't conform to the, to Jeff's satisfaction, the town can withhold the CO.
Yep.
Any other comments? Bruce, is that satisfied?
Am I satisfied? Well, I hear the answer. I'm, I, I guess I would, I would have hoped it was more definitive than that, but I haven't seen, I mean, I was looking at all these documents at about 3:30. I didn't see two submittals by Jeff. I didn't see, you know, responses from the applicant. So I, I'm, my hands are a little bit tied with not having, you know, somehow I'm not seeing in the Dropbox and I'm looking the documents you're referring to, so. I mean, or maybe I just need more practice at digging around in the Dropbox, but anyway, I, I don't want to hold the meeting up. I mean, I'm, I'm, you know, I don't want to be mistaken here. I'm supportive of this project. I just want to be sure that we all, including the applicant, are understanding of the weight we put on these documents submitted by our experts, namely, you know, Jeff and, and the other submitter. They're it in terms of our requirements. And so, you know, we're looking for 100% compliance.
You're back, Mike, can you hear us?
Could you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. My different device. I, I, so just to get back to some of the comments. As, as Kevin pointed out, you have a favorable from Jeff with the, with the consideration the infiltration test be performed. I put that in your, in the draft motion, and as I stated earlier with the parking, it's something you would deal with should this business leave and we have a new applicant before us, and a change you used.
Right, we, we understood that. My question, infiltration test is, he runs the test that's required by our applicant, or by our approval here. What, what happens if the test fails?
Mike, can you ask the question through me? So I think I can respond to you.
Well, actually, I, thanks Jim for offering, but unfortunately, as you know, the public hearing is closed. So if, if the, if the test failed, one of two things would occur. One is that they would have to redesign their drainage system with other options in, in order to handle the storm water. Secondly is if it was a substantial change, they would be back before the commission. So, you know, they have performed the test, we're just waiting on the results at this point, as Jim said.
All right. Okay, so there's, there's an answer if, if it fails, they, the worst come back before us for approval of a different design. Okay, anybody else?
Just let me take another moment on this. So Jeff's letter, the one I have, is dated May 25th, and it has 10 points, and he finishes with the favorable recommendation he offers is subject to resolution of these outstanding comments. And are you saying, telling me that nine of them have been resolved and only waiting for the 10th, for the test results?
There's a June 4th letter from him.
Oh, and so, am I right then? Is that fair? All tenets are resolved except for, we're still waiting for the results on one of them.
Okay, Mike, second. Okay.
Got it, thank you.
Okay, are we ready to make a motion?
I'll, I'll offer the motion.
Okay, Bruce?
We have that our, that's been suggested for us. But it, a motion to approve application 2110 of Valley Recreation LLC owner, MACV Development LLC applicant for special exceptions pursuant to Section 4.5 for outdoor storage associated with the retail business and Section 10.2.5, 10.2.5A for reduction of 55 of the required parking spaces for the construction of a new retail building at property located at 1603 Hop Meadow Street, Assessor's Map H02, Block 403, 002B Lot, Zone B2. Special exception approval is subject to the following condition. Special exceptions not valid until notice of grant is filed with the Simsbury Town Clerk. The site development is subject to the following conditions. One, final plans are to incorporate WPCA comments. Item two, applicant is to provide two milars and one paper set, which are to be signed by the chairman. One is to be filed on the Simsbury Land Records with the Office of the Town Clerk. The second milar is to be filed with the Engineering Department. Item three, an administrative zoning permit is required for the project. Item four, an infiltration test is required as per Town Engineer's comments. Test is to confirm that soils are as permeable as referenced in the drainage study. Results from the infiltration test are to be provided to the Town Engineer and Town Planner. Item five, signage is to be externally lit. Item six, applicant shall provide copy of excavation permit from Connecticut DOT District 4 for any work within the state right-of-way. Said documentations to be provided to the Town Planner and Town Engineer. Item seven, the commission authorizes staff to act on their behalf concerning authorizing minor changes to the approved plan, such as landscaping, grading, and lighting. Said changes to be made in writing to Planning Department staff and approved before they are implemented. End of motion.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Second, by Mike Doyle. Any further discussion?
Well, should we add an eighth, just acknowledging that the applicant has agreed to repair or replace the stockade fence where needed?
Bruce?
That sounds reasonable to me. I mean, I, I don't know if, the, the fact is the site plan calls for that fence. Now, if it's falling down, that doesn't comply with the site plan in my mind. That's not an in-place stockade fence of six or eight feet height. So if they leave it in a falling down condition, it doesn't meet the site plan. But if others would feel more comfortable if there were wording here that was specific to the, to the fence, I, I don't mind putting it in there as item number eight, but.
Since the applicant has agreed, I don't see any problem with it, just as a reminder. As long as you and Mike agree to the change, it's okay.
Okay, so.
The other Mike.
It's okay.
Okay. The one that can speak.
I agree to it.
Item eight.
Item eight then is the repair or replacement of the entire stockade fence on the, where it exists on the perimeter of the property.
Okay, now Mike, second that, Mike?
We'll second that, absolutely.
Any further discussion or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining? Okay, Carrie, six nothing, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, everybody. Hopefully run reconstruction within 30 days or less, my hope is. And, and, and Mike, that zoning letter, you gonna get that to us? Okay, good. All right.
Thank you, have a good day.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Gotta have a one last bowling party in that building. It's kind of sad to see you go.
It's already closed, but I do know people that wanted to buy pins.
Buy pins?
There you go, contact the Wilsons.
I'm not sure if Wilson owns it anymore.
No, let me speak up for a minute. This is Mark DiDavolo. I'm the managing member of this partnership and we're buying the building. But there is actually, I didn't want to say anything, and Matt may have said something to you about it, but there is a little get-together on Thursday night of this week. We didn't want to say anything until after we were approved. We didn't think it would be appropriate. Thursday night, we're having food, and there's bowling, and there's bowling pins, and if somebody wants to buy something, Bruce or whoever said something, please let us know. Come to the party, let us know, because we don't want to just throw it all in the dumpster if we don't have to. We'd like to be able to give things away, bowling balls, shoes, whatever's there. It's, it's all gonna be available, so please accept our invitation to come and visit us on Thursday. You can bowl for free, there'll be mini golf, even the laser tag is supposed to be working. So Mike Doyle, I see you smiling, I hope you'll be able to show up. There's Matt darling there. So guys, consider yourself invited and welcome to help yourself to whatever you can take out of there, put it in your truck.
Thank you, Mark, we appreciate it.
All right, you're quite welcome. Thank you all, appreciate your, great doing business with you, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. General commission business. There are two things. We, we have a regulation update workshop and the signed regulations. And two was to, we wanted to, Bruce had brought this up, about having a more discussion on the, one, on the plans or requests about 200 and 250 Hop Meadow Street. I don't think it's a good idea to carry on that discussion unless the applicant or whoever represents him, TJ or whoever, is here. So I think we should table item two in our general business. Item one, Mike, what do we have on the signed regulations?
So I'm actually going to Main Street Partnership's meeting this Thursday morning to discuss and present the sign regs to them for input. And then I forward this also to Morgan at the chamber, so hopefully that's shared with the, the chamber too.
Okay.
I know this group wanted to hear from those two group, those two entities.
Right. And one of the big philosophical discussions that we've been having is the internally lit signs. And I think we've, we, we have some people who are adamant in one way and the other, and some of us are kind of wondering if there isn't a way we can, we can accommodate something that's different. I had a thought the other night was, would it be possible to make an internally lit sign the subject of a special exception? With constraints with the, the terms that, for the things that we look for that would protect us from the things we don't want to see in internally lit signs. But permit something like, you know, video boards and that sort of stuff, which. there's more and more of. Um, anyway, that's just something for discussion. Any thoughts on that?
Well, I have a thought, the video boards would be one of the things that I would go out to exclude.
Yeah, I, I'm just trying to think of what would I be looking for to approve, I, I'm not visioning anything, um. So, I'm not sure special exception.
What gives you a list of things that you could, you could say? Um, you know, can't be seen from here, can't be.
Well, I mean, you're gonna try and control brightness, right, when the light is on, things of that nature, right, we already covered like signage area and percent of square footage and whatever, but so it's, it's gonna be things of that nature that we would need to make sure that we would uh, have the right ordinance or regulation in place to control, right, because we don't want something brighter than the sun blinding people as they're driving down the road.
Or funny videos, you know, things like that, which I don't know, it, it's just, um, an idea that how could, could we do more with, with a special exception kind of thing where there's a list of characteristics we want to, uh, control? But maybe you get into the fact that we can't deal with content.
Yeah, I mean, that, that, a sign to me is speech, right, so it, it, we can't go there.
Anyway, so that's, that doesn't seem like something that's gonna work, let's, uh, hope that the, uh, that the chamber and, and Main Street will have some constructive ideas about what they'd like to see. And, uh, we can restrict it geographically. Um, we can ban it entirely as we have. I haven't, has anybody driven through Avon and Canton and Granby to see what um, nighttime lights look like there?
I would offer not good as a characterization of my experience driving through Avon and Canton specifically. Not good, there's lots of lights, lots of lights, and, uh, you know, I, I don't think it serves the town well, but they have different traditions in those two towns, and they have, I guess, people on the planning and zoning, uh, committees or commissions that have different perspectives and the majority of this committee over the last couple of decades, anyway.
Yeah, but how about Collinsville?
Oh, I don't know.
True, I mean, I, I haven't been over there in a long time at night.
Yeah. I haven't either. I'm not sure how well it compares to Simsbury.
Well.
Yeah.
Anyway, just some thoughts, I mean, I, unless we can come up with something, I think, you know, that's hard to change what we're doing.
Well, and, you know, before we rewrite all this fun stuff, let's hear from businesses, right, you know, and, and let's, let's see if they're, if they're wanting to. They think it's gonna help improve, you know, their, uh, their bottom line, it's something I'd wanna have a a much greater discussion about, if we don't hear from them, well, then, our ordinances are, uh, supporting them appropriately.
Yep. Okay. All right, I don't think we have anything further, anybody have any other comments?
Yeah, Dave, uh, your earlier reference to the to the agenda and, uh, discussion relative to the Hartford properties. The agenda I have doesn't have any reference on it.
Got added, it was added, uh, late.
It's not in the Dropbox.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I, I guess, I don't know what to say about this, this whole thing of these late documents going into that Dropbox. I don't think are helping us, really, but I'm not running the meetings here, so, I don't think that's a great thing for these late. We tell people who want to offer information to us at our Zoom meetings, they have to submit what they want to tell us by noon time on Friday to Mike Glidden. If we can't do that for information the staff is gonna give us or we're gonna give to each other by noon time on Friday. I think we need to, you know, give them a little more thought to whether this makes it look.
We, we were trying to.
Present it the way we want to, to the public who look at these meetings and see.
We were trying to respond to your request.
Oh, I, I realize that, but when you tell me it was in the, I, I don't see it there, and my point was just gonna be I'd like to see it on there at some point, and my concern is that our memories and our, our reactions are fading. We're people, our memories are, you know, less sharp as time goes along, and one of these days, they're gonna walk back in here with a plan and we're gonna be, you know, potentially um, taken aback by something that, you know, we're not comfortable with and, and, you know, they got the wrong message somehow from TJ possibly. I, I don't know, I'm not suggesting TJ, TJ had anything but a perfect reaction to what was said, but um, I guess my thought was just, do we want to have you know, some sort of conversation, see if we have a vision of how we might move this forward, because it's a huge issue for all of us. And, uh, I think we might get in front of it rather than be behind the eight ball with, you know, the applicant, uh, having a plan hatched and tons of money invested in it already before we're engaged, you know, in our thinking.
We, we've already listened to them, we've let them go on, leaving us thinking that, well, maybe this is okay. And I think that there are some people that have reservations about some of the things that were proposed.
For sure.
Or we put it on the agenda and, and it didn't get, it was an amended agenda which was posted Friday. The amended agenda was posted Friday.
Yeah, I apologize, I don't know why, it's, it did not show up on Dropbox.
No, it's not there.
I, I'm sorry, that's, I will take full responsibility of that, because I, I amended the agenda on Friday to include this, and I thought it was uploaded, I'm sorry, that's on me.
You were also gonna email it to everybody, didn't you?
Yeah.
Anyway, that, Bruce, I think that was just a pickup that we had.
Uh, yeah, if, if, if I'd never seen it happen before, believe me, I wouldn't have said anything about it tonight. But I think this whole thing about late submissions to Dropbox and changes in the minutes, you know, that happened sometime after five o'clock sometimes, and sometimes our meeting starts at seven, at six-thirty documents would be put going into the Dropbox, that's not helpful.
For almost all of those cases, it's been minutes that we've, that I've said, oh, heck, let's make these changes and post them because they're, they're obviously things that should be changed. Um, and, but I think if it's ju- if it's just minutes, and I think it was just minutes, um, we can control it. Anyway.
I don't have anything else to say about it, but I, I think we should have a conversation about.
Yeah, can we not discuss it if there's no application? Why wouldn't we be able to discuss that zone?
It'd be out of concern for having the, the applicant feel like they got somehow ambushed if I don't know how they might take it if TJ doesn't have notice, at least that we're gonna have a conversation that he might want to tune into, not participate in necessarily, but uh, then he's not relying on the minutes of the meeting, but if that's what he wants to do, that's fine with me, if they want to send another representative, it's just a matter of tuning into Zoom and they'll know exactly what was said. And, uh, you know, can firsthand know kind of where we are.
I'm confused by your point, Kevin.
I'm just wondering if we can't have a discussion, uh, by the commission, absent, and absent the owner. Um, but we could talk about that zone, because that is a specific zone, so you could talk about the Hartford, um, I don't remember what we call it, but, but it's called the Hartford Special Zone or whatever it is. So, we could actually generically talk about that, because there is no application pending by the owner. So, we could talk about the zone without, without, um, you know, addressing a specific application.
That's correct, Kevin, but they came in and talked with us, I think they've been a responsible developer for that property and done what we've asked. And they came to us with some ideas, and I think, um, if we are not in agreement with those ideas, we ought to make our, our comments known to them and not ambush them when they come in with a, an application that conforms to the things they gave us, and then we say, oh, no, 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 no.
Right.
Well, then we should have them back. Yeah, we should have them back for more informal then.
Well, that's, that's what we're trying to do, okay, it's on the agenda tonight, but um, the idea was that we'd have in our agenda, we'd tell the applicant that we're going to discuss it, give them the opportunity to come. Okay?
Well, it's not on any of our agendas, so I wasn't planning on talking about it tonight anyhow.
Maybe I'm the only one whose memory is fading here, is each week takes off, each two we block, you know.
Okay.
All right, it's on the next, it will be on the next agenda, and we will notify the applicant so they have an opportunity to come and listen.
All right, we also have the public hearing next time on, on the industrial zone.
Right. Do we have any other applications coming up, Mike?
You also have an application for a special exception for a new liquor license at Andy's for a new restaurant that's coming to town. They're going in the former Dunkin' Donuts spot.
Yeah, yeah, can you, it's, so, it's only that space, it's not the, not the Andy's space itself.
No.
Smaller space, okay.
Something else, I'm, I'm sure you may hear something later about that space.
Okay.
The plan we just proved kinda had multiple tenants in that space.
It did, and it had a drive-through on the northern end of the building for the, for the Andy's market, plus a bunch of other stuff.
That was gonna be the Dunkin' Donuts, right? Or something, it was some.
Something, I, I, they, yeah, I don't know that any, any specific tenant was specified, but.
No, but they, I, I don't know if everyone's seen, they, they started working over there now.
Yeah.
And maybe just the last one is that you, you may see, um, in your, probably your second meeting in July, uh, Nelson Construction. They are before the Wetlands Commission as we speak. For the redevelopment of Iron Horse, uh, I, uh, the Simscroft Echo Farms, uh, Iron Horse Lot.
Did, did design review meet tonight?
They did at five-thirty.
Uh, it must, it must have been quick, because I got on too late to see, did they approve the changes for Honest Kitchen?
They did. Yeah, I don't, I don't have any information on that, other than they're doing a renovation to that tenant's spot at this point. But it's another, they're setting it up, it appears to be food service. Because I believe that there, that, that tenant, current tenant is leaving.
Oh.
Well, as a side note, I've heard a number of positive comments about Jersey Mikes. Can't wait to have them move in, so, the sooner the better for Jersey Mikes.
Okay, can we have a motion to adjourn?
I move we adjourn?
Second by Mike, all in favor?
Hi.
Opposed, abstained, carry six, nothing, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Good night.
Good night.